Yeah.
Yeah, Mandy.
They want to say, oh God, we all get arrested.
There's no school that day.
No, that's.
They wouldn't, they probably wouldn't.
No, I can understand if we were, if we had room three or four.
There, there was. Yeah, I do remember that, and yep, that's just how it is.
Wow. That's gonna be.
You can only go into closed session for certain.
I mean, we'll be. I don't know how many people.
No, they're here.
Russian, not Irish.
You can't go there to talk about.
They've been.
I guess there's another one in two weeks, so.
Right.
Because that's from the public.
I thought the Russian.
They'll tell me that.
Yeah, so.
I don't think so. I hope that, no.
I can make the big deal. And then that was. It was not a big deal.
You sure wanted to cover that up.
Yeah.
I have to say hi to Chuck, yeah.
Hi.
Call the meeting order, please stand for the pledge. Could I have the young folks from Elms come up?
There you go.
You can help us lead the pledge tonight. Come on.
Go right up there.
Go right up there.
We're not here, I promise. Come on, okay, you wanna go? All right. I.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Lucy, Hudson, and Hannah, thank you so much. All right, welcome everyone. Uh, we have a pretty full agenda. This is our organizational meeting for the year. And so we have a lot to talk about tonight. Um, happy new year to everybody, and welcome back. Um, I am going to now turn it over to, uh, Mr. Meinkah to do awards, recognitions, and celebrations.
We have a lot to be thankful for in the new year, and, uh, we're gonna hear some really exciting things about what's going on at Elms Road Elementary School tonight. Um, but a couple special people that I'd just like to recognize tonight. First of all, we have a middle school student who's a seventh grader. Uh, Sam Machado was selected as the December's Young Inventor from MIT. That's the Massachusetts Institute of Technology. He had an entry of a Zelda app that he created. He loves coding and making games, and he created the game based on one of his favorite games, Zelda, and was actually selected by MIT as a young inventor, so.
That's great.
Uh, that's pretty spectacular for Sam. And, uh, Mrs. Swales, uh, will be presenting at the National Science Teachers Association. She was selected to showcase our school district and all that she's doing to keep our students curious, motivated, and engaged with learning. And, um, had an opportunity to talk with Councilman Kramer this past week. Uh, the Mackinac Bridge, uh, photo up here, um, which is actually temporarily staying here. This painting was take, was made by a combination of Swartz Creek residents. It was a community painting that was done in June of two thousand eighteen at hometown days, and the painting will be on display through Swartz Creek, uh, here in the boardroom for viewing, um, for the next four months, and then it will move to its next home. So they're rotating that around the, the city, so. Um, thank you for Councilman Kramer's, uh, insight on that, and, um, certainly thank you to Kelly and to Sam for their great efforts in helping showcase our school district.
Great, thank you very much. So I wanna use this time as my president's prerogative to, to share with the community that at our last board meeting, I mean, it may have been after, many of you wa, stopped watching, we had, um, spoken to Doc, um, Mr. Meinkah, and we gave him an evaluation, and we rated him highly effective as a board. And so I just wanted to congratulate him on his work.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on. We have the opportunity for public comments related to agenda-specific items. If anybody in the audience would like to address the board, please stand, state your name, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. You'll have a chance later in the, uh, meeting as well. Nobody? Okay. Moving on, uh, we have our consent agenda. It includes our meeting minutes from the last meeting. Uh, this agenda, uh, resignations, retirements, payment of bills. I would entertain a motion.
Someone.
Supportee. Jessica, any comments or questions?
Yeah, I've got just one possible. On, uh, the five where it says consent agenda be resolved, that, uh, that line there, it says approves the, the six. It's kind of, and I think it's supposed to probably say five. I should've called earlier. See what, under num, number five on the back page.
Uh, so we just need to remove the six?
And put five, uh, five, you know, under gen I and five. That's all, just a minor, minor, minor.
Okay, Joanne, can you just make that change? Thank you. So with that change, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Uh, hold on.
Check, yes, sir.
Yeah, approval of the regular board meeting minutes? We on that right now, five, yeah. I wanna add that last month, we went into closed session, uh, for two items. Uh, one was the teacher's contract, one was the supervisor's evaluation. Right? Um, underneath the Open Meetings Act, and closed session is very specific. We violated the law. Um, and we violated the law because we had about a thirty-five minute discussion on a contract that was signed by the superintendent, um, and that should've been discussed at public meeting and not in closed session. So, I mean, how are.
Outside of the superintendent's evaluation?
Yes, we went into closed session for two specific items. We talked about three specific items. And the third item we talked about was a policy and procedure thing, which I know is later down on the agenda, but we had no right, and I even made mention that we should not be talking about this here at a, at a closed meeting. So, I don't know if anybody recalls that. So I don't know what we're gonna do to correct that in the future. We govern ourselves. So I'm not gonna approve the minutes based on that. And everybody was here with the exception of Tony. You cannot go into closed session and talk about other things that we not specifically go into closed session for. And everybody was here with the exception of Tony, and we had a twenty to thirty minute discussion on a contract that was signed, which was in excess of three million dollars, and the board never approved it.
If I remember correctly, that was brought forward by yourself?
No, it was not.
So I think we need to just govern ourselves that we, um, discuss appropriately when.
No, that's, that's totally untrue. Ben brought it up, and I said, this is not the place to talk about it. We continue talking about it. And I said specifically, this is not the place to talk about that.
I don't remember that. I don't see how that'd be there.
Really? Okay, well, I kept notes, just my own personal notes, but that's fine. Okay. If that's the way everybody feels about it, then that's really sad that this board does not recall that, because I did not bring it up, and I said, we're not gonna bring it up here, but we continue talking about it.
That's not how I recall it?
Okay. Well, regardless, if, then if, if I had brought it up, then somebody should've stopped me, because it was not on the agenda.
Correct, and that's what I'm saying.
So that, so if, if that's the way you remember it, then why didn't you stop it? Because I asked to stop it.
I don't remember it being enclosed, honestly, but.
Yeah, I could, I would just say that I brought that up, and I brought that up as a part of my evaluation as a conversation point of a policy that we've been talking about. Um, and so I did that as part of my reflection on it. And so I understand your point. It's duly noted from my perspective. I'll take the ownership on that. I was doing that as a part of one of the areas of my evaluation and talking about that and self-bringing that up and talking about how we need to look at that in the policies for the future.
It's, it's no reflection of you. I don't think that you should've signed a three million dollar contract out on your own.
I understand.
And that, and I had brought that up several times prior to that meeting, and to be honest, um, I think some people knew that was gonna be brought up in closed session, because some people had notes on it from a year ago, and I'm like, where did that come from? And that's why we shouldn't have talked about it. But I'm just noting that on our minutes.
So my recollection is it was part of the conversation related to Ben's evaluation, and I don't wanna say anymore, because it was a closed session requested by our superintendent for evaluation, so.
I'm not gonna talk about this valuation. Uh, you know, we voted on it, and it was a positive thing, but we should not have had a conversation for almost twenty-five minutes on that particular subject.
Okay. All right, uh, so any other comments or questions? Uh, hearing none, uh, would you like to do a roll call, please? Tony?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Chuck?
No.
Brian?
Yes.
Alicia?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
And Carrie?
Yes. Okay, we have a consent agenda. Uh, now we have the school board officer election process. And, um, by policy, we are, um, at our organizational meeting to choose, um, our officers. And the way the process works is we will start with president, go to vice president, then secretary, then treasurer. Um, there can be nominations for the each individual officers, and, um, based on the order in which someone is nominated, we then vote. And a person needs to have a majority vote in order to, um, be elected to that position. So with that, I will open up the floor for a nomination for president.
Carrie, Jermaine?
Second.
Okay, so Brian and Tony. And as I recall, we will vote. Or, and we, any other nominations? No? All right, so we have Carrie Jermaine for president nomination by Brian and Tony. Any other comments or questions? Do you all have?
I just wanna fully support that nomination.
Thank you. We do roll call, please.
Alicia?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And Carrie?
Yes. All right, thank you. All right, we now have, um, nomination for, uh, vice president. Need a motion? Nominate Brian! Okay.
Second.
Tony for Brian? Any other nominations? All right, any comments or questions? Okay, Joanne, would you do roll call, please?
Chuck?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Alicia?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
And Brian?
Yes. Thank you.
Congratulations, Brian, thank you. All right, um, we now have the office of secretary, and I would entertain motions.
I'd like to nominate Jessica, please.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Tony? Any other nominations?
I'm gonna nominate Tony.
Any second for that?
Who was nominated?
Tony.
You need a second?
I do.
You got it.
Okay. All right, so we will start with Jessica. Any, uh, comments or questions? We have a roll call, please.
Okay, for Jessica, um, Alicia?
Sorry, do you wanna yes or no, or you wanna vote?
Yes, sorry.
Yes or no?
Yes. Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
Mike? Mike?
Yes.
You're voting for me right now.
Charlie?
Oh, Tony. Well, this is.
Carrie?
Yes.
And Jessica?
Harry, that, I feel bad if I say yes. Yes.
So we have, we have a consensus for Jessica, so we, we don't need to go on to the next. And, um, Tony, I'm gonna thank you for your service. And a smile. And now we have, uh, the treasurer, office of the treasurer.
Nominate Mike.
Second.
And Jessica? Any other nominations? All right. Any comments or questions? If not, we do roll call, please.
Chuck?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Alicia?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
And Mike?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, everyone. That was, um, very efficient. Okay, um, now, we are moving on to our student board representative report. Mr. Jacob Witter.
Thank you very much. I have a few documents to pass out. I didn't wanna kill that many trees, so I just have one for Mr. Heatherton, and for Mr. Meinkah, and I'll give one to you, Ms. Franklin. I'm not sure, you know, how many minutes and what you might wanna do with that.
Thank you.
But I was doing some research into how our administrators might better be able to connect with our students, and I found this really incredible program called the Shadow a Student Challenge. This program entails an administrator shadowing a student for a day. They will follow that student around, participate in the classes as if they were a student, actually do the coursework, you know, go to lunch, eat lunch, the whole nine yards. And I have a video, it's about a seven or eight minute PBS clip, about an assistant principal, uh, near Chicago, I believe, that did this. I'd like you to see it.
Rod, can you grab the light?
I can never do it.
Oh, there it is, there it is.
High school students and parents sometimes, high school students and parents sometimes say principals and teachers don't quite understand what it's like to be a student these days. It turns out there's an effort to change that. Some thirteen hundred principals recently took a day off from their usual role and instead followed one of their students for a day. The approach came from two groups outside the traditional field of public education. The Deduct Design School at Stanford University, at Stanford University, and IBO, a design company based in Palo Alto, California. Special correspondent John Tolanco of Education Week followed one principal through the first-ever National Shadow a Student Day Challenge. It's part of our weekly education series on Making the Grade.
My name is Karen Ritter. I'm an assistant principal at Eastland High School, which is just outside of Chicago. And today, I will be shadowing the students. Why are you doing this? Just to get a sense of what students go through during the day. Hey, Laura. I'm just able to spend a lot of time with students. Usually, I'm in charge of things that the teachers are involved in, so this includes teacher evaluation, teacher attendance, uh, professional development.
Is there a way at this district?
I would say fifty percent is in meetings.
Do you feel like you know what goes on here?
I, I do, you know, just because I do observe a lot of classrooms. Now, I'm looking at it more from, you know, the teacher's perspective, but now, I, I wanna know what it feels like through the lens of a student.
Republic High School serves some seventeen hundred students and is both racially and economically diverse. Today, Karen is following a ninth grader.
Wait for me, Alan.
Alan Marsia.
I first met him because he came to my office and said he wanted to talk about his schedule for next year. He's in a lot of remedial classes, and he wanted to be changed out of those classes, so I really wanna know what makes him feel that way.
She hopes to find out, not just by observing Alan's classes, but by fully participating in his entire day, which started at seven thirty-five with a boost of physical education.
This is the class that I was most nervous about, 'cause I don't run.
Her stamina will be put to the test by what comes next. Seven more fifty-minute periods, starting with Learning Center for one-on-one help.
Right, yeah, look, because you have to explain.
Followed by Alan's usual two-hour double math class. Then, barely pausing for a bite, before jumping into the second half of the day. Four back-to-back classes. Literacy, computers, English, and freshman seminar, until the three P M dismissal bell marks the finish line.
It's like having this Ritter following you around.
We're going the wrong way, Charlie.
Having the assistant principal follow you everywhere, it's, um, you know, feels weird.
And for Karen, we checked in with her about halfway through the day.
Um, I'm holding up. Um, I, I definitely feel like my energy level has gone down since this morning. Great. You know, I had to write an essay in literacy, and I felt like I had a hard time concentrating and, and trying to focus. Yeah, it's, it's a lot of sitting and a lot of thinking, so.
Can you work with your buddies while you go through this one?
Like algebra, algebra block, so it's a double period. That was hard, 'cause especially it's over, um, a couple different lunch periods. So every time the bell rang, I, I wanted to get up and, and leave, but it's like, oh no, we had another period to go. More time to go.
Double-period math is one of the remedial classes Alan wants to change.
It's really annoying. And it gets me exhausted at times. And then just like sitting down for two hours. Gets me mad, and sometimes puts me down, because I'm like, I could be like, learning like new stuff instead of my stuff with like something doing for like seventh, sixth, eighth grade.
So what do you wanna be doing?
I would like to be taking, um, you know, French, like woods, metals, all those like types of classes.
Because Alan is in the classes that he is, he doesn't have the opportunity for a lot of those electives. He, you know, was placed in certain classes because of his test scores, but I don't know if he necessarily needs to be in that level yet.
I got mine is.
He was getting things and teaching them to me.
Yeah, you got it.
Alan helped me.
Really?
Yes. I think Alan represents someone who is, is very representative of our school. Middle-of-the-road kid who, when challenged, can reach high, very high expectations. And I think, you know, maybe keeping him at a certain level might, uh, hinder his opportunity to do that. So I would like to see more opportunities given to students, and, and maybe we need to rethink the way that we place students. Not based on test scores.
How else had her views change? To find out, we asked Karen to grade Eastland High School on some key measures, both before and after her shadow day. Keep in mind, her view was limited to just Alan's classes. We began with this statement. In this school, students learn actively, creating, questioning, discovering. Your grade yesterday was a B. Today?
Um, I would say a C minus.
Her scores also went down for student engagement, from B to C plus. And relevance. How often teachers drew a clear connection between students' work and the outside world? That dropped from a C to a D.
So you're looking for creativity.
But her take on school climate and the expectations both remained high.
Yeah, we have some work to do. We have some things that we can fix, but it's a great place. I think, um, we provide a safe environment for kids. We have plenty of resources for them. I think I will do some more shadow experiences with an ELL students, with a special ed students, with an A P level students, because they, I think they do have different experiences here.
That was fun. Do you want to do it again?
The point is to, to know what the students are thinking and, and wanting, and I start with them.
In Franklin Park, Illinois, I'm John Tolanco of Education Week, reporting for the PBS news hour.
Okay, so you can see that the assistant principal really enjoyed her experience, and she felt like it improved her ability to, um, you know, govern the school and have an understanding of what it is that students go through on a daily basis. I can tell you with certainty that the student body would be in support of a program like this. Seeing our administrators in the thick of it, you know, um, going through what we go through every day can be extraordinary. And so the, the pieces that I passed out to you are, um, workbooks. Um, you know, I'm sure that as an administrator, you'll have a much greater understanding of what those questions are in there, but I'd love to have further discussions about this and try to put it into place. And if anyone has any comments about it, please feel free to share.
I think it's a fantastic idea. I'd love, I'd love to see what the administrators say.
I, I know that our administrators are extremely busy, and especially right now in the building process. So I, you know, but I do believe it's a great program. So I'm, you know, it would be nice to see them, you know, participate in this program one day. I just don't know how many times you can cut into their schedules.
Yeah, I do think that this would be,
pre-planning.
You know, like a once-a-year thing for each administrator, probably, is the view that I take on it. And, um, if I remember right, she said that it's a, a, a national day, so administrators across the country dedicate this work for this project.
That's very cool.
It's very cool. Thanks for bringing it up.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you very much. Okay.
Oh, Mr. Meinkah, did I pass this to you, or did I forget to?
No, you did. I just passed it around, so I'll get one from over here, so I have a copy.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, or, or I'll get your copy before we leave.
Your website, isn't it, Jacob?
Yes.
Yeah.
Shadowastudent.org.
Okay. I know we all didn't get a copy.
All right, I think we're back to you, Ben, for your superintendent report.
Well, we're gonna start planning our Shadow a Student Day next week, so. But that will be, uh.
Is it P E day?
It's P E day. I need, you know, New Year's resolution time, so. Um, I will say we have, uh, and Jacob certainly knows this, we have exams next week, and so our students are gearing up towards that. It's the end of the semester. Uh, so we're wrapping up the first semester. Um, one of the things I'd like to think about down the road, we had some conversations about this with our teachers group, is the fact that it's very difficult to go on a two-week break and then come back and try and cram for exams for three weeks and, and have that set up. Um, I've talked to a couple other superintendents that have tried to work to, especially when they're starting school before Labor Day, end their semester before the winter break, and that allows for kids to take that break off, actually take it off. Their exams are done, and then when they come back after break, there's an opportunity to, um, to, to really kind of start fresh. So we're starting a new semester at that point. So, um, it's, it's not in the works right now, but it's something I'd like to have further conversation about down the road. Um, I know that we've had some conversations at previous board meetings about, um, parent resource nights, and one of the things that, uh, will be happening uh, this week, I'm sending out a, an email to all of our parents, um, with some updates and information, but there will be a survey in there just inquiring about different sessions that our parents would find beneficial. Uh, we wanna try and provide, uh, a, a, a wide range of opportunities for parents that, you know, are, you know, have a lot of really great things going on um, with their families, and some that really need a lot of help, um, wanna make it open for everybody. So that email's gonna be going home this week, and if any of you have suggestions or thoughts for the parent night, I know that I've talked to a few of you, please feel free to let me know. We'd like to try and incorporate that. Um, I'd also like to, uh, just, I know that several parents have, I've been on the phone this week, uh, several parents trying to plan out, um, the next year's vacation times and things like that. Um, we do, we are working towards, uh, solidifying a calendar by the end of this month, so for the next two school years, um, that's something that, you know, we have to talk about as a group, as a board as well, uh, the board has to talk about,[1717.21] Um, that's something that, you know, we have to talk about as a group, as a board as well, uh, the board has to talk about. But we will be trying to publish something hopefully by the end of this month so that parents can start to plan. Mr. Heatherton, I don't know if you wanna um, talk a little bit more extensively on this. We don't need to spend a lot of time on it, but I just thought I would let, make awareness of uh, our MTSS, which is our multi-tiered systems of support, uh, which Mr. Mr. Heatherton is very actively involved in, in running those systems. And basically that is anyone um, who would need something different than the ordinary course of instruction. Um, and our school district has been recognized by MyBlissey, which is the Michigan's Integrated Behavior and Learning Support Initiative, which is a lot of, there's a lot of acronyms there. Um, but been recognized as uh, our school is, is having very high levels um, of their processes for MTSS. I don't know if you wanna talk just briefly about, you know, the work that's been done and, and how we've really, uh, really been excelling on that. I see many, many opportunities for us to actually share what we're doing with other school districts.
Yeah, we started off in uh, the MyBlissey Grand originally as building level buildings, and this is like ten years ago. I think uh, we did our, uh, went to our first conference on what intervention looked like and I did a report and uh, I think it was Dr. Mitchell who said, uh, so this is gonna be a, an annual report, right? And uh, we started, uh, I think, reporting on the data ever since that point. Uh, but later, uh, you know, we've uh, continued to evolve. Uh, we've done presentations around the state at the ISD and we've had uh, in the first three or four years, just when we established what that looked like, we had about twenty-five to thirty school visits. But we continue to um, work on a, a tremendous amount of things within the system. Uh, right now, the biggest uh, project that we're putting together is an MTSS handbook. Um, and uh, with thirty-one A law, you have to have all sorts of processes and procedures in place with your uh, MTSS. And uh, we've been working on with the county, uh, and uh, it's been, it's been pretty amazing.
So lots of kudos to Mr. Heatherton for his work on that and our staff and our teachers who worked very hard on that process. But um, I think we do a very good job of trying to make sure that we have systems in place so that students don't slip through the cracks and, and that's something that we're pretty widely recognized for, so it's fantastic. The last part of my report, and I'll be brief. We have a uh, Mr. Ahern is gonna talk a little bit about the finance committee. I know uh, Mr. Melkey was there as well. Um, we have a, a budget ratification or amendment, I should say, that's coming um, to you at the end of this month at our next board meeting. And um, Mrs. Gray will be here to present on that and, and share with you the information. However, I wanted to get you that information ahead of time, so I have tonight um, just a copy of the, the rough draft um, budget. There'll be opportunities to ask questions and I think um, Mike will talk a little bit about it tonight. So I just wanna make sure you have that in your hands, um, so that you can come prepared for questions next week when, or in, in a couple weeks when Chris comes to present.
That is it for me?
Any questions for Ben? All right. I believe we only have the finance committee, is that right Mike? Mike, we have the finance committee report?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Uh, fin- finance committee met on Monday. Uh, we received and discussed the cash and investment summary for December. You have a copy in your packet tonight. Check register for December was reviewed and followed and noted. General fund, a hundred and seventy-six checks, the amount of four hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars. Payroll, twenty-four checks, two million, eight hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Building and site fund, four checks for a hundred and ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven. Cafeteria fund, five checks, ninety-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight. Student activity fund, forty-three checks, forty-one thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars. Bond project fund, three checks, seven hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred and nine dollars. We received and reviewed the bond projects, uh, stadium seating and press box bids, which you have a copy in your pack, packets, and which we'll, we'll be voting on tonight. The low bid came in approximately ten thousand dollars below the projected cost. We discussed the pending uh, budget amendment, as Ben mentioned, that Chris will be presenting at the twenty-ninth board meeting this month. Uh, we received a general fund budget summary and this custodial equipment analysis report, which R.C. Hunt.
I already got it.
Prepared?
Oh yeah, yeah, I passed it that way.
Have enough?
Yeah, sure.
And now you've got a copy. Uh, we again discussed the goal of at least a ten percent fund balance. There were no bond change order log entries for December. Ben is addressing a ten percent upcharge for change orders not initiated by the district. And that was discussed at the steering committee this afternoon. We had discussion regarding the anticipated move of the administrative offices during the remodeling and the cost of renting office trailers versus the need to construct partitions at the cage. We also discussed the need next month to review the cage contract, which expired June thirty-first. We had discussion regarding the residence that is for sale immediately south of the Little Dragons Learning Center. And the purchase of this property does not appear feasible at this time, is not, and is not recommended. There were no public comments. Uh, the next meeting will be announced after the organizational meeting tonight. We adjourned at four fourteen. Any questions?
Can you talk a little bit about that ten percent upcharge?
Yeah, so um, one of the conversations that we had was if there's going to be a change order, meaning that we would say we want that window to be placed over there, which is different than what it was originally designed to be. And those things do happen, that we would expect to, there's a standard ten percent upcharge on those types of changes. Um, our concern is we don't wanna see that upcharge, and it hasn't been a real problem yet, but it's just early on in the process. So we wanna make sure that when the contractor does something, they, they're not showing up with a ten percent upcharge, just, you know, because those can add up to a lot of money over time. So uh, just being super diligent about making sure we keep those in check. And we had that conversation today with our construction manager.
And then the onus is on them to actually come to you if there is.
Correct. And there will be times where the district decides to make a change, you know, and, and we would expect that at that time, but.
If they make a change without notifying you.
Correct, correct. Um, the custodial equipment analysis also, I know Mike passed that out. That um, was basically addressing the aging equipment that we have. And so in the budget amendment that you're gonna have the, the data for right here, we are asking to um, allocate some funds to purchase and replace our custodial equipment. Um, because it's well beyond its usable life, we think that this can help um, offset some of the, you know, we certainly have worked hard this year to try and improve our cleaning services. It's always an ongoing challenge, um, but this particular um, issue has been something that's contributed to it. And so um, you'll see that in the budget amendment and you'll be able to ask questions about that for sure. I mean, anytime, but certainly when, when Chris comes next week, so that's kind of the backup information for that.
Okay. Any other questions for Ben? Thanks Mike, appreciate it. Now, we have, I think, the pleasure of a presentation by our um, future leaders here in the red shirts.
Have Mr. Simonson come up and hear a little bit about what's going on at Elms Road.
Sure, wherever you want to stand in front of this. Uh, good evening, welcome, and thank you for having us in. Uh, we've got just a few, I guess I'll stand out of the way, we've got just a few pictures to kind of navigate the presentation. So we're just gonna highlight a few things that we do up at Elms Road and then uh, I'll introduce the special guests. Um, so a couple of points of pride at Elms Road. Uh, we started the watch dogs program, which some of you may have heard of before. It's where we bring in uh, dads of great students, as the dog stands for. This is a national program. We've been doing it now, I think it's our fourth year. It was there one year before I was up there, uh, but it's grown to be pretty popular. We uh, had a informational night at the beginning of the year and I think last year we ran about thirty dads throughout the year. Came in and one day a week and they come and they spend the day not only with their child, but reading with other kids, doing math problems with other kids and then going out to recess. And you know, they're, they're, you know, just the kids get to have that time, not only with their dad, but with their friend's dad and things. So it's, it's uh, pretty exciting for a lot of kids to see the smile on the faces there, so we enjoy that. We've got um, pretty much a full book of dads signed up for this year and we've had quite a few in already, so great program up there. Uh, lower uh, right there, you see our family dinner night, which has been a huge hit. Uh, they started on, I believe, uh, back when uh, as a, as a Title One parent involvement night. Uh, but it's just become just a great, great thing. Every month, pretty much, we have one with the exception of some of the holiday months. Uh, and so tomorrow night, actually, we have Mancino's catered, uh, with soups and, and sandwiches. Uh, and the community comes out, the, the parents and their kids, and then we couple that with other activities, reading down in the uh, library, doing the AR quizzes. And then I think there's some bingo activities and things planned for tomorrow night, thanks to Mrs. West and, and some of the other staff. So uh, the family comes out, we actually have a couple hundred people show up for those, so it's great. Um, here I have a couple of pictures, uh, I uh, I wrote educational sleight of hand underneath the picture with the phones. We've got kids there, they're uh, reading into the phone. They're talking to people on the imaginary phone, it's just trickery, just getting them to read, but uh, really gets them interested in reading. So you see all kinds of things like that going on in the school. On the lower right here, we have uh, some of our fourth graders uh, using the Mini Sphero robots down in the STEM lab. And they use their iPads, they write code to program those robots to do all kinds of things. And so kids are getting their uh, feet wet with coding and, and things like that in the STEM lab. Um, our initiative this year, one of our goals was to increase our math scores, and so we tried something new. One of the things that our staff is always uh, talking about is that, you know, kids don't have math fact fluency and that stops them from being able to do operational problems. They'll get stuck on what's eight plus four, and they'll sit there and count, and count, and count, and then they're, they're just stuck. And so they'll just quit on tests and quizzes and, and big things like the M-steps. I said, well, how do we attack math fact fluency? And so we looked at a program and piloted it and it's really taken off. The staff uh, have really reported positive results. If you go to the next slide real quick here, um, this is just a couple of graphs that I pulled off just this afternoon. Um, our starting fluency, every child uh, grades two through five took this uh, fluency quiz. And our starting fluency average was twenty point one percent fluency on whatever order of operations they were on, whether it was addition, subtraction, uh, whatever level that child was at it. The, the program learns what the child can do. So our fifth graders were working at their level, our third graders, and on down, were working at their level. So that was our fluency at the start of the year and currently our fluency has risen to sixty-six point three percent on the various math operations. So uh, we're, we're seeing a lot of growth here. The, the green graph is a very similar indicator there uh, for, for where we're at now in, in green versus where we were at the start. So we're seeing a lot of good things. We don't know how to compare yet until we see maybe our M-step results will increase, because we didn't have these measures last year across the school. But it's really interesting to see the growth and our teachers have reported that they really like it. One more uh, slide there if we could. And so right here is another chart that just shows over time from back in uh, September, the growth in uh, our uh, fluency throughout the, the school year, so. Um, the bottom shows the average student has gained a hundred and twenty-four facts, and that's the fluency of those facts. So just recognition, right now, I know this problem, so. Um, just uh, something we're exploring as a school and we hope to see good results on things like the M-step and that kids are being more confident when they get these math quizzes and tests in front of them and are able to carry that over into life, so.
Are you able to compare to other school districts or other states or?
I haven't contacted the, the company to ask them yet. I'm sure they do have data. This is, I mean, they're, they're a nationwide company. They're out of, I believe, South Carolina. So I'll get into that and, and see and I can let you know.
That would be really interesting to see.
Yeah, to see what, what other, especially, I'm sure they have similar schools that they can compare to as well, so. So, um, that was the, the special program I brought to kind of showcase. And uh, the next thing then, I'll introduce our, our students who were so kind to come and present today on uh, short notice. And um, they're gonna talk to us about Odyssey of the Mind, which is a program that we just started at Elms Road last year. It's been in the district a couple of years now. Uh, and uh, these three, I believe, were all three on the team last year. And we'll have a lot that they could share about last year, um, and they're also working on their problem for this year, which the competition is on February eighth coming up, uh, real short order here. So I will uh, let them do the talking and I can fill in any questions later, but their coaches are here as well, Mrs. Lehman and Mrs. West. And we do have two teams this year, so these are three representatives from the, the two teams that we have. I'm sorry, and Mrs. Wyatt is here. Three coaches, I apologize. Um, and so we've got Lucy West, Hudson Sanford, and Hannah Wyatt. So you guys can come on up.
Hi, my name is Hudson Sanford. I was on last year's team and we got first place in regionals and made it to state, so we did pretty good. I'm here to tell you about how we prepare for the competition. We have two types of problems in Odyssey. Problem is an activity that the team is required to complete using problem-solving skills and teamwork. We have two types of problems in Odyssey, long-term and spontaneous. We practice these weekly. For spontaneous, our coaches, Mrs. Lehman and Mrs. West, set up activities for us to practice. The most important part of Odyssey is long-term. I'll have Lucy explain long-term.
Okay, so um, when you're in Odyssey, you have to do a long-term and there's five problems to choose from. There's the vehicle one, where you create a vehicle and you go through a series of obstacles in your performance. The second one is technical, which has uh, electronics and gadgets. And the third one is classics, which is based on a classic book or story. Then there's structure, where you make it out of, like a structure of a balsa wood, then you put weights on it. And then performance is like a skit that you make, like that the kids put, make the ski- like the script and stuff. And uh, this year, uh, last year, we wa- we did the performance one, which was called uh, Absence Distract. Uh, this one we have, this time we have two teams. One of ours are doing the performance, which is gibberish or not. And then the other ones are doing classics, which is the effective detective.
Um, thank you Lucy. The two types of problems that you can compete on, the two um, they're, well, there are three. There are hands-on, verbal, and combo, which are these spontaneous types of problems. And um, there's the hands-on, where you have to build something with your team. The verbal, where you go around and you pass out cards to say something that goes along with the theme of your problem. And there's the combo, where you pass around cards and it usually it's about, you make up a story or something. Um, yeah, that's pretty good.
Thank you for that nice presentation.
Real quick, we just have two teams. Um, this is actually my fourth year involved in Odyssey of the Mind. I coached at the middle school for three years and then last year I had a middle school and an Elms team, and this is our second year. Um, this is re- this is states, so it's a big thing going on all over the state. Um, we, each team can have no more than seven people on the team. So if you start with seven and people quit, you can't add more. So that's why this year we got to bro- make it so there's fourteen, so we have two. And um, so here they are. What they have to do is the kids have to make all of their ideas themselves. They have to make all of their props, they have to make all of their costumes, they have to create all of their scripts. So up at the top, some ideas that we just showed, that's the middle school team from last year. The girl in the middle was a pearl. She came to me and said, listen, I need a broken sled. I have this idea. Because you only can use so much money. You have a certain amount of money, and if you have it around or you find it, you can use rod sale prices. If you go buy it, you have to use full prices. So she said, can you find me a broken sled? And I'm like, okay, I don't have one, but I'm gonna throw that out on Facebook. And my friend's like, I have one right on top of my recycling. Do you really want this? It's broken. And I'm like, yep, I don't know what she wants to do with it. So she created a oyster pearl out of her broken sled. Um, that's our team at the bottom, at regionals. They, at the top, once they perform, they get little tidbits from the judges back on their face. Um, but it's great, they, our teams came in first in regionals last year. Um, both teams, they advanced to states. Our middle school team took fifth place in states. And our elementary team, it was their first year, and got a whole big idea of what to do this year. So right now, so lots of ideas. So this year, we are busy building things, you know, last over break, my daughter said, look, I need to build this. This is the dimensions, so my husband taught her how to use power tools, stood behind her going like this. And our fourth grader created a power tool, you know, great big wooden structures. So they're building, they're creating costumes, they're sewing, you know, all kinds of things. And so that's got some of the, last year they made musical instruments out of recycled things. So there's drums at the top, there's banjos, but it's a great program and the kids love it.
Any questions for the kids?
How many teams participated to become in fifth place, you said? How many teams were there total?
Um, for our middle school team?
Yeah.
So that was out of fifteen, but all, to get to the states, you have to be in first or second place in your regionals.
Got it.
So there's regionals all around the state, the top two teams go to states.
That's very impressive, so you competed against more than fifteen schools to get to where you were at.
Yeah, so you had to keep going, and so there's fifteen at states and then, and they kind of went up through the years, you know, they started lower and kind of saw what it was and each year. And that's why I think this year. lower and kind of saw what it was and each year, and that's why I think this year they might progress even more to that, for being aware of what's out there and what they could do.
Congratulations.
I have a question, do you guys do anything to try to get others involved, get them excited about this?
I have mentioned this to a few kids, if they're interested, if they could ask, ask coaches, because they're like, what is this whole Odyssey thing? And I'd explain it to him, to them, and they're like, man, I really wanna do this next year, so I've.
Our groups are growing and the kids are, the kids are really good at our mouthpieces, we don't really have to say much, we had, like I said, we were able to get more students this year due to the fact that the kids really hopped it up last year when they came back.
Did you turn kids down, was there more than the the required amount that wanted to join and then they said, we can't take you at this time?
That's the tricky thing, because you have to have coaches and you can only have seven kids on a team.
Right, that's what I'm asking, was there fourteen kids that put in for it and you had to turn some down?
It's our coaches that we're looking for, so yes.
Oh, really?
Coaches take a lot of time.
He's not allowed to raise his hand.
Do you know how many teams we have across the district?
Well, I know there's teams at Moorish, then we have two teams, I do not think there is a middle school team this year. They asked me, my child is now in high school, I wanted to have a high school team, I talked to the principal there, I put it on Facebook, I put it on ITC and we have to have at least four, four or five, no more than seven, and I could not find the interest. But I, again, am a teacher at that school, so I can't be at the high school to promote it in sense, does that make sense? So I would really like to, I'm willing to do that, my daughter was willing to do it again, but we had to find people who had time, who are interested and ready to go. Because there are scholarships and all kinds of things as well.
The kids are probably the best spread of the news, so as as it goes through longer, I'm sure the middle school kids will encourage, you know, or start themselves up there at the high school, it'd be good. Great program.
So what's the best part of being part of this team?
I think you really get to meet a lot of new people and you really learn some new problem, problem solv- solving skills. And there's not really much to say when you think about it.
Everything's awesome.
This was a group, a great group of kids to work with last year, this is Wes, this is Wyatt and myself, we were all kind of the coach of all, the the one team that we had last year, because Mrs. West was taking on the middle school team, so. This is Wyatt and I took on kind of the bulk at the elementary, although the Wests have been great guides to help us continue this process with the kids. So, and it's fun to watch them, if you ever get a chance to to come see some of their practices or see something, you know, that would be great for you guys to come see some of their performances or invite them to come do their performance for you here at the Board of Education meeting, so you can see what it actually looks like.
So when, when is it, when do the competitions start?
February eighth.
Okay, and then go into weeks?
February eighth is our regional competition and this year it's at New Lothar High School. And then the top two teams from, usually the top two, because it goes by how many? The top two teams in different divisions will qualify to go to states and states is in March, March thirteenth. In Grand Rapids.
Are they videotaped, does somebody there assign the videotape and so we can look at it maybe later? We can't make it, would somebody do that?
They do have a videotape of their last year's performance that we could send.
I would, yeah, I would like to see, I mean, I don't have time sometimes to drive, you know, here or there, but I'd like to see it.
We can make that to you after February eighth, because we're still tweaking a whole bunch of stuff before February eighth. But when they perform, we can make it happen.
So, and you were saying there's a lot of time that goes into this for the coaches and the students, is this some multiple days after, a week after school every day, once a week or?
Weekends and Friday nights and Sunday nights and the hard thing is, is that we as coaches cannot say anything to them. They have to create, problem solve, everything. We can guide, we can hmm, but we can't say anything like Mr. West helping Lucy. He couldn't tell her, he could show her how to do it, but she literally had to create it herself, so that's what the other thing that it's doing is it's teaching kids how to make things and think outside of the box. We need to do this, we have this type of material, how do we create it?
And then does it start at the beginning primarily of the school year, after March, is it, are they done or do they get to do anything else?
This year we had a parent meeting, I think it was in October, with kind of a slideshow and some information, because a lot of people are new to Odyssey and don't really know what that is and what it entails. So we had a parent meeting and then we started with one day a week, now we're up to two days and a couple of weeks before competition. And some Sundays, come over if you need to build things, if you need, because at school we don't have all the tools and all that, you need to paint giant things, come on over to my basement. That whatever, we get it all built, we get it all made, some at school and then the Friday night before, we do run-throughs at my house. You know, we pizza and each team performs for each other, we pack up our cars, because we're not allowed to pack up their stuff. They have to make sure they have everything they need, they have everything they want, all packed up and ready, we just drive it there, they have to unload it, they have to be in control of the day.
This is a silly question, I know it's gonna be bad from the board, because I just, I'm gonna put Brian on the spot too, because I polled him. How is it funded? I mean, where do you guys come up with the money, is it coming from?
Where did you get that money?
I, I'm just, because, what money, and there's a lot, there's a lot, yeah.
So, the 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 cost of the program itself is, the 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 fees are actually quite light, so they came out of our activity account at school. It's a hundred and thirty-five dollars for a membership to Odyssey of the Mind and that covers if I were to have up to five teams, one of each type of problem. The hundred and thirty-five dollars covers that.
Does it, is it, yeah.
The the cost for materials and stuff, I looked for a bill and whatever, she hasn't, she hasn't, but we, you know, we work with them on the, like, it's like up to a hundred and twenty-five dollars per team for the materials to do their stuff.
So we have enough money to continue doing this?
Yeah, it's.
Okay, good, that that's why I was asking, because if it's allocated, fine, if not, we'll get some money, it seems like a very worthwhile project.
Mrs. West said we could use.
For the children, you could use more.
So a lot of times the kids say, hey, I'm really looking for this, we search around, we ask parents, we put it on Facebook, you know, like, don't tell me where to buy it, because I can buy it if you have it around in your basement and your attic and your garage and you're willing to donate it and that's a lot of, our things come that way, you know, hey, do you have giant cardboard? Yes, I just got a kitchen, yes, I just got a giant TV, good, because we need big cardboard, oh, we need. So a lot of our things, because a hundred and twenty-five dollars can be the garage sale prices of things, so costumes and that, hey, last year they decided they wanted leather jackets for some of them, so we had a grandma go scour Goodwill and all that and find all the things for three leather le- black leather jackets for them to wear.
You should email all the board members, maybe we have stuff in our basement.
So a lot of it is, when they come up with an idea of something they need, we just put it out there and say, hey, we're looking for whatever, so.
Quarter fifty cents garage sale stuff, great, okay, perfect, thank you guys.
Well, thank you again for being here tonight, Mr. Simonson, thank you. Mrs. West, Mrs. Lehman, Mrs. Wyatt, Lucy, Hudson and Hannah, thank you so much, I know you wanna get home and do your homework. So, thank you for joining us, we really appreciate it.
And I do wanna make sure everybody knows this, I'm a proud Elms graduate. Mrs. West was my first grade teacher.
Thank you so much.
For having us, I do, I have a ninth grader this year, I had a high schooler, a middle schooler and an Elms, they're everywhere this year. Thank you, thank you for having us.
Okay, moving on, we have our board meeting calendar that we need to review and discuss.
Yes, so this is in your packet and so your board calendar is a function of the board to decide when you'd like to have your regularly scheduled meetings. What I have done and and alongside Joanne is we've just basically prepared a similar replica of what we had this year. So it's up to you if you'd like to discuss anything, wanted to just create an opportunity for discussion before you actually would vote on it. Wanted to throw it out to see if there's things that you wanna see differently, if you wanna add meetings, take meetings away. Anything that you'd like to discuss and I'll just let you guys handle that.
So I guess, has any, anybody seen any need for changes, Mike?
Are we talking committee meetings?
Not yet, so the, we're looking at the the calendar for the board meetings, did you have any questions or?
Not on the board meetings, no.
So, anybody have any questions?
Of course, not on dates, but the last statement about meetings being held at seven P M. I wanted to throw it out there for discussion if anybody was open to making them earlier in the evening. I feel like they're kind of late and they go longer and especially the more and more that we're getting the community, the students and the teachers to come back and make presentations, I wondered if earlier made more sense.
I'm fine with whatever time, I mean, four, five, five o'clock, six.
Yeah, that was my proposal, it would be six o'clock, I just don't know how that fits, meets everybody else's schedule.
So, so let me ask Ben, any conflicts from a from a school standpoint, activity standpoint, I can't think of any, but.
No, so we typically would hold, occasionally I'll hold the Citizens Oversight Committee meetings on on that time, but I can move that timeframe a little bit earlier. Six o'clock is is fine, it's not gonna conflict with many school events and if it would be a conflict, it would be a conflict at seven o'clock as well. Because a lot of our sports contests, for example, would start at seven o'clock, so, you know, it it actually is it's really a decision point for you as board members if you wanna do that. The the one, I guess, advantage as Alicia had brought up, of course, if we have younger kids that are doing a presentation, you know, it's getting them home a little bit earlier. But that's, that's totally up to you if, and we can change, make that, make that adjustment. I'd probably wanna communicate that out just to the community, because, you know, people obviously have been accustomed to a certain time, so.
Any opposition to six o'clock? Or any?
Does it work for your office?
Yeah, I just wanted to share that.
Yeah, absolutely. We can do, we can do whatever time, seven o'clock, eight o'clock.
All right, and then the board, the dates, any conflicts, any things we need to address?
Do we know the dates of the fall conference for M A S B?
Yes. And it's in the news, I'm sure. Oh, did you have something, Mike?
Yes, I apologize, I can't hardly hear anybody.
That's okay.
Because one of my hearing aids is broke. I wanna talk about the committee meetings, I like the way we have them set up on one day. I just, I just wonder if we could get more attendance if we move those afternoon meetings up an hour. Like, instead of three and four, four and five, because I know for one, Tony has a hard time coming. Because he gets out of work and has quite a drive back. And I just wondered if that would work for everybody if they were moved to four and five.
I guess I would defer to you and to the folks that are on those committees.
I'm very flexible, I can, whatever time, I'm good.
Chuck, you're on one of those committees, Brian, Tony, Mike.
Three or four doesn't matter, five doesn't matter. Just try Monday mornings with it, I'm off on a Monday, I can come in, it's really no different if it's the evening and I can't make it or the Mondays I'm off and I can make it.
Can you, would you make it if it was at four or five, you don't know, okay.
We could go back to mornings, that is better for everybody and if the Mondays I happen to have off, I get them off and I can come in. It's almost a push to go in the evening or in the morning now. So whatever works for everybody. I know we used to do mornings, we used to go seven, eight, nine and they would just go boom, 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 done.
So why don't we come back to that, because we're looking at the the board meetings and so before we move on for that, because the next, the next thing on our agenda is to look at the board committees.
Okay.
So, so let's, if you don't have any issues though, you're not, you're not planning to go to Indiana or something or, I don't wanna get you in trouble, so.
I have no, it's just fine.
Okay, all right, so it sounds like we are good with maybe a six o'clock and we'll we'll vote on this later. Okay, all right, going forward, the board committee membership and the meeting time, so back to your, your question. So currently, we have people that are, have chosen to be on particular committees. I guess I would pose the question, do people want to stay on those committees? Or would you like to change? Are you good on the committees that you're on?
I need to change, I I don't know if I can continue consistently to make it and be a chair.
So I think one of the things that we'd probably wanna establish before we start looking at the meeting times is who wants to chair or who we would have chair each committee. So we have four, we have four board committees. The Bond Steering Committee is an administrative committee, but there are board members that participate. So it's a, you know, really a function of who would, who would like to chair the different committees.
And here's, here's what we currently have in place, the people and the chairs. So why don't we start at the top, so academic achievement, I currently chair that committee, I'm not, I'm not tied to it if someone else would like to do it. I would still like to participate on the committee, is there anyone who would like to be officially added to the committee and is there someone that's interested in chairing the committee?
I would like to stay part of the academic achievement committee and I would like for you to continue to chair. You do a great job.
Oh, thank you, so anybody wanna be added to that committee officially, or Mike, are you still okay with staying on academic achievement?
Sure.
Okay, good. Are we good on academic achievement? Currently we we are at eight o'clock on usually the second day, the second Monday of the month. And does that continue to work for people? I'm not hearing opposition, moving on to building in site. That is currently chaired by Tony, Tony has indicated that he would like to not be chair, but maybe be part of the committee.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, and we also have Mike and Brian who sit on that committee.
And Chuck sits on that.
And Chuck, okay.
Yeah, I'd sit on it every, yeah.
So Tony does not desire to be chair, but likes to be on the committee, do we have someone?
You can be. I'm already a chair and another one, don't do it. It's up to you, I'll do it if I, yeah. I would nominate Chuck. But that's at eight A M?
It's at, currently it's at four o'clock in the afternoon.
That's what I thought, I'm I'm mixed up here, because it says finance committee, it says eight A M, building in site.
No, actually, those, that goes with academic achievement, sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it's the one below, got it, yeah, that's fine. Yeah, because it's right after finance, that's why I stay every week, yeah.
So I guess, would you be open to chairing that committee?
Yeah, I'll do that if Tony doesn't wanna do it, I'll be more than happy to take that.
So you, but you wanna stay on the committee, okay, all right. Anyone else wanna be on that committee or another?
I'd like to stay on it.
Okay. And we have Chuck, Brian, Mike and Tony. And that was the question you asked about the time.
Right.
So you were asking whether that meeting would be moved back or ahead?
Building in site?
Yes.
Would go to five.
Okay.
If, if finance ends up at four.
Okay. Does that work for you?
Can we move it to the mornings?
It absolutely works for me, I don't, I would just wanna run, because a lot of the time the finance committee meeting is, Chris is there and and she's usually here later than four o'clock, but I I don't wanna commit her just yet, but.
So that means finance would then move from five to five?
Three to four. Are you, Chuck or Mike, are you, and Brian for that matter, opposed to the committee's finance and the building in site moving to the morning?
I'm, I'm open, I can move, I'd rather, I prefer mornings actually.
And that's where you said you could come on your day off.
I personally would like to be more involved with the finance committee, but it is harder for me to make it in the afternoon, but to, as you said, if they go back to back to back.
That's what we used to do.
That would be much easier, at least personally. That's much, that would be much easier, at least personally, for me, and if you guys are open to it, might as well have a conversation about it.
It's up to Chuck, Chuck's chair.
You know what, I'll, 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 I'll step off it, I just soon do the afternoon, so, but I don't want, if Jessica wants to go to him, I'll step off it.
I'll off it with.
Well, no, don't step.
No, they're talking about, no, they're talking about finance, Chuck, not, not building in site.
Okay, so what are we gonna do, do finance in the morning?
If you wanted to, we can still do building in site at four.
I'll just, okay, I'll stay on building in site at four, I'm good with that.
If they wanna move finance to the morning, I mean, that's, I don't have to be on that committee.
Would that work for you, Mike?
Morning?
Yeah.
That's fine with me, doesn't matter.
So nine o'clock or does that work?
I I, I will do whatever time you guys choose.
Cause we would have a seven, eight, nine o'clock. You would be okay with that? Alright, so let's, let's talk about finance, so Mike, did you want to continue as chair?
Yeah, I'll stay there.
As treasurer, okay. Tony, did you wanna?
I'd like to stay on it, honestly, yes.
And Chuck?
Only if it's in the afternoon. I I always split up my day where I come in for one meeting and then, you know, come back at, you know.
Okay. Okay.
And it's not necessarily that I'm on, so if Jessica wants to be on, somebody likes it in the mornings, that's fine.
Okay. So it sounds like Jessica, you would like to be added to that committee? Okay, and so, uh Chuck, you would stay on the other committee and it would, could be in the afternoon, is that more convenient for you?
If it, if it stayed in the afternoon, I would stay on the committee.
Okay.
Do you wanna do three to four, four to five, what's your preference?
Doesn't matter to me, whatever you want in the afternoon, three to four, four to five, or five to six.
Okay.
I think five to six is a late night for you, because you're here a lot late anyways, and then for you to be here another night late, you know, I know it's only once a month, but.
Sure.
Why, you know, you got children and things to do too at nights.
Yeah, thank you. If if we did three to four on a day that you were off, would that be a time you could come? Potentially.
Yeah, but if I was off and, rather do morning, but we'll do it, Chuck's chair will do whatever the, the he wants.
Okay.
How many people are on the building committee, four of us?
Um yeah, it would be you and Mike and Brian and Tony.
Tony.
So.
Oh, God. The guy's cool. So we have Mike as chair, Tony continues, and then Jessica on finance?
For finance.
At seven, at nine o'clock in the morning, nine o'clock, okay.
And then building in site will be in the afternoon.
Building in site, Chuck as chair with Tony, Mike and Brian, but are we staying at three or at four, three o'clock?
You can, you can determine it, whatever's convenient for them.
What works for you guys?
Anything in the afternoon is alright for me, three start, four start, or five start.
Three o'clock is.
Four.
So, four o'clock? Four o'clock, okay.
Sure.
Alright. And finally, we have policy, which has been meeting at seven A M prior to academic achievement. Brian, you are the chair, would you like to remain chair and on that committee?
Yes.
Um I also enjoy that committee and I think Alicia, you've been on that committee, did you wanna continue? Yes, anybody else?
Can you be on all four?
I don't wanna get you in trouble, Mike, but you can do whatever you want.
I come anyway. Put me down, because I come anyway.
Yes, you do come anyways, yes.
Seven o'clock's still a good time?
I think that works best for Alicia.
That works best for me, or Friday afternoons, and I don't think people like that either, so, those are my options.
So let me confirm, we have academic achievement, I'm going to chair, Jessica and Mike will be committee members. Everybody is always welcome to join us, it's a committee of the full, and that's at eight o'clock in the morning. Building in site committee is um Tony, Mike, Brian, Chuck will chair it, and that will be at four o'clock in the afternoon on Mondays. Friday, or a finance committee, Mike will chair, Tony and Jessica will be part of the committee, that will be at nine to ten. The same mornings as academic achievement and policy. And then finally, policy will be chaired by Brian, I will be on that committee. Alicia will be on that committee and Mike is asked to be added to that committee. And that's a seven A M, second Monday, or whenever we've designated if needed. Um so.
So I would just make a recommendation, uh just because we haven't had committee meetings yet this month, because we were waiting for um the committee assignments. Uh if any of the chairpersons are not opposed, if none of them are opposed, I would suggest that we hold all three, three of the four committees. Really, it's going to be building in site, policy and academic achievement on the twenty seventh.
Okay.
And then uh we can hold off on finance until next month, where we could have all four meetings scheduled on the same, if that makes sense.
Go back to the second.
Go back to the.
Second Monday or?
Yes, so if the board calendar, if you end up approving the board calendar from tonight, uh it would be, February tenth would be the first full, all four meeting committees meeting on that day, if that makes sense.
On the tenth?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then we would have just building in site, policy and academic achievement on the twenty seventh, which would be before next board meeting. Just to ensure that every committee would have a chance to meet this month.
And then we'll go from there.
And then we'll, we can typically follow that uh pattern of the Monday before that board meeting each month.
And now that Joanne is completely confused. Good. I'll have to accurate that. Okay, so January twenty seventh, we'll plan to meet um for three of our committees, and then February tenth will be the next one. Right, great. Um now we have the bond discussion for the bleachers and the press box.
Um, really don't, didn't end up needing to have a large discussion about this, but you'll see, um I I will just explain, um because obviously it's a large amount of money that you're being asked to approve tonight. When we talked with our construction managers, they informed us that there's a seven month lead time from the time that a award is produced for bleachers. Cause they have to go through fabrication, they have to, every project they do is a custom project. We are, uh as Mike had said, we're about ten thousand dollars over on the base bid. There is an alternate uh for a larger press box here for about sixty nine thousand dollars. Um after talking at the steering committee today, our recommendation at this time is to stick with the base bid, save the money and and do what we're what we're set out to do um on the base bid itself. There will be a conversation at, for our next meeting about whether or not to put uh concrete underneath the bleachers themselves. Obviously, the bleachers have footings, um and then there'll be gravel base which will be fenced in. We'll have to have a conversation as we uh be- before our next board meeting or at our next board meeting about uh the concrete base and whether or not we would wanna do that. Uh there'll be a couple other um things to talk about at our next board meeting, because we'll have uh that complex in this building to approve in their totality, but tonight, it's just about the press box and bleachers. And um the company that was the low bidder, and you'll see in the um, in your, on your recommendation, it'll show where the base bids came in for each uh vendor. And so Southern Bleacher was the low bidder with a combined uh bond and base bid of five hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars. So our recommendation would be uh to move forward so that those can begin fabrication and they can deliver them on time for our field to be complete for fall competition.
Any questions for Ben? So that seven months is the fabrication and installation?
It's fabrication, installation, everything up and running, passing inspections, um but it just takes a long time to build. They're, they're different than um the bleachers of the old where, you know, you had gaps underneath and things could fall down, they're a seamless uh system now. It requires some, some time, I guess, to get it in, so.
How many months again, I'm sorry?
Seven months.
Okay, alright. We now have the opportunity for a public comment, anybody in the audience who'd like to comment, please stand, state your name, keep your comments to three minutes or less. Anybody? Okay. Alright, we now have the need to go into closed session for the purpose of collective bargaining. O M A fifteen point two six eight, section eight C, I need a motion.
Some support.
Tony, Mike, any comments or questions? Joanne, could you roll call, please? Yes, Alicia? Jessica?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
And Brian?
Yes.
Okay, we uh, we'll take a few minutes. Five minutes for a restroom break, because everybody needs it.
Okay.
Thank you. Can you say a little bit?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thanks.
Mr. Malcolm, this is that worth, but. Thank you, that's a great, that was a great presentation.
That title's awesome, man.
That's uh, probably pretty insightful.
I would think, I hope.
But they love it.
Um, oh, sorry about that. Um.
I wonder if, how it would uh, I'm just thinking out loud and we can talk more about it later, but I'm wondering how it would go to have like maybe we could, cause you always wanna have, there's always things going on in school where you don't wanna hold the administrators tight. This is difficult, but maybe you have one or two of the principals doing, and then maybe even nineteen, twenty, twenty. But it's not pulling it up, because that's sometimes I think the same thing is true, and a teacher doesn't. Well, I think it would be effective to have a teacher in as well, I mean, and I, if you're already opened in or not.
Yeah, but I think especially.
If you close it again, I've closed it and opened it, opened it and closed it several times.
So they're teaching five today's periods, and they kinda have their, their sign up with us, but they probably don't realize the totality.
Okay, yeah, that's all you find was just.
Especially for like an A P student like you guys, it's just pop, 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 pop.
And, and you just realize.
And so it would probably be pretty high.
So, yeah, I've heard uh many students say, I don't think my teacher understands how many classes I have.
No.
Because it's also with the A P class, you know, it just didn't, it didn't work.
You do.
And they continue to.
Yeah.
Oh, it's awesome to do. I'm waiting for that one to say pause, I'm waiting for this one to come up, but neither one of them are.
I I'm just very frustrated, I couldn't pull up uh the contracts, you know, the architectural contracts, I couldn't pull up the.
So shoot me an email and um we'll make a time, so here's the calendar, and you know, maybe you can hack it.
I I could pull that up, that's the only thing I could add, and the things you see right there, I could pull up, nothing else.
Yeah, for sure. Organization, I mean.
But you had, I I think you do great work. Thank you, I appreciate that, Joe, I think you do, I really do, thank you for the shared.
Sure, sure. Yeah, um so shoot, shoot me an email and then I'll just make a time that I can come up there to you.
Why is it that way, normally it was always up and down, whatever.
And then maybe I might just pick the week, not this week, but next week sometime. It'd probably be, it's just, it's just to give us the.
Oh, okay, I had a greater difference where kind of the next week, so I don't know what would you like to do.
Look my down with the time I spend on that, I think that'd be great.
Mr. Healy, thank you.
So you can email, we'll make it a.
Send a document to me, share it.
Oops, sorry, sorry.
Remember history document, all the positions, everything.
Uh where do you have that at?
It was uh, it was on today's um uh agenda about, well, let me see if I can find it again.
Okay.
How's everything doing?
Sure, it's just a, it's a history of.
Good.
Did you guys have a nice Christmas and New Year?
Yeah, probably going back fifteen years.
Nice and quiet. Every board member what the title. I'll have for sure, okay, thank you. Um now, would you mind taking a picture of me, I got my nice name tag here, I know my parents will be real excited about this. I'll take one of just the name tag here and then uh.
I can't laugh, I took one incentive to curse when I got mine. I think Chuck may have taken, I don't remember who did it.
I said bless you, but I was assured he sneezed or coughed.
Oh, no, I, I didn't even hear you.
Yeah. Oh, okay, Christina, yeah, that'll be fast.
She's gonna, she's gonna send you, make sure it's done right. Do you look at that?
Let the team take the picture.
I wouldn't have done it like that.
Angles.
Yeah, oh, I'm terrible at that.
It's a girl thing.
She's a professional, she's a professional.
We need a lesson, we need a presentation of that.
They're going into class session, so we'd have to leave, I'm so sorry.
So, oh, I have a question, does that mean now do I take the notes or does Tony?
You are immediately.
Yeah, you can.
But there's also ours.
Okay. I was saying, I thought there was like some ridiculous one thousand ninety some hour.
Are we good, Rod?
We're circling.
Okay.
Are we ready to come back into open session?
Yeah.
Okay.
I told my three year old grandson that something was loading on Netflix and he said, actually, maybe it's called downloading.
Okay, Lucy?
Three, mm, I said then say go boomer. Sweet it. Are we good? Okay. Alright, we are back in session at eight forty-six. And continuing with our agenda, we have um board action items. The approval of our twenty twenty Board of Education meeting calendar that we discussed earlier, I would entertain a motion.
So the move.
Support.
So I have a Tony and a Brian, any comments or questions?
Are we adding the change to six P M?
That is a very good point. We should probably acknowledge that here.
As amended.
Okay. With the six P M start date, time rather. Alright, be it resolved that the Swartz Creek Community Schools Board of Education approved the twenty twenty Board of Education meeting dates as presented with the six P M start time for all board meetings. Any comments or questions?
Uh effective with the next one in two weeks then?
Yep.
Okay.
Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, the next we have is the approval of the Jersey County Association of School Boards liaison and alternate. In the last year, I think it was Jessica and Alicia that were our primary and alternates.
I will, I will just say that they have officially asked, um they don't always have the greatest participations in their meetings. Um it's not for me to say, but I I said that I would pass on to the board that they are hoping to have somebody who is interested in attending their meetings whenever possible. So that was what they wanted me to pass on for whoever would attempt to run for that, or be our liaison.
Are they still on Wednesday nights or Thursday nights?
Thursday night.
Okay.
I'm willing to continue. Is that?
I said good.
Did you really do it?
I really did it.
And Alicia, you were alternate?
I don't mind being an alternate.
Okay.
So, I think I went once and Jessica's abscessed.
Is anybody gonna fight these ladies for that opportunity?
Yeah, Chuck, you wanted it.
No.
Are you sure?
Actually, I did it. I don't wanna commit to all of them.
If you can't make it one day, then Alicia can't call me.
Okay, so I need a motion for, as it stands, Jessica and Alicia primary and alternate.
Support.
Brian, Tony, any comments or questions? Be it resolved that the Swartz Creek Community School Board of Education appoint Jessica as the board's liaison and appoint Alicia as the board's alternate to the Jersey County Association of School Board Numbers Executive Board as presented. Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, congratulations and thank you, ladies. Alright, um we have, we're asked the approval of the construction manager contract, Wolgast and E N L Construction. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
So Brian, Jessica, any comments or questions?
Well, this is the whole contract, right, it's been signed a year ago.
Yeah. And we had talked about. And we had talked about.
Why is it being approved now?
So this is the conversation that we had about wanting to move forward and making sure that we have larger contracts like this, things like the cage, things like the custodial contracts and things like that, that the past practice of the superintendent authorizing those, that those contracts would now come, and I believe there's unanimous support. I know you brought it up, but there's unanimous support from everybody to do so. Reached out to our bond legal counsel and they said, have the board just affirm the contract that's in place, take a procedural vote.
So. When we, when the contract was signed, did we go out through the bid process as required by law?
It's not, it's not required by law to go out for a bid process.
It's a service contract, right?
It is.
Yeah.
But we did, we did interview several construction managers.
How is there procedures, say it's, that's required even as a service? I'm almost positive I read it in the policy and procedure book, but that's okay.
Yeah, I, we did interview several construction firms, managers, took, took interviews. We had three to four board meetings where we introduced the potential construction managers.
It is, I'm curious, so if it's not required for service, then why are we doing it with everything? I'm just required. I mean, we, we got all sorts of contracts that are coming up for service, why wasn't this one required, if you're saying it's not required, because it's a service contract?
I think Ben just said previously it was not in practice of the district.
We've, we've decided to make a change, you know, I know that you had suggested that, so we're making a change to try and, in the future, the superintendent's not solely signing service contracts, that we need to create a policy, a policy committee.
Well, that's why I'm asking Madam President, she's been here for a while, and the Vice President, what was the policy, you let people sign contracts?
They, the ones that are dictated by law that require the bid, the bond, the, the board will review and approve.
These kind of contracts? And I'm, and I'm asking, did we have closed bids, did we have closed bids on this, as required by law?
They're not required by law, these are service contracts.
What did the legal counsel say?
Versus product, we're not buying product, we're buying.
Legal counsel says that you do not need to go out for bid, but they suggested and affirmed what we've talked about, that we, it would have been wise to take a procedural vote just to assure that, you know, everybody had done that. They said nothing would have changed, but they said now it would be a good idea to affirm those, which is, I think everybody agrees we need to do.
Can I ask?
And, and moving forward, I think that the policy committee should have a discussion about establishing a policy for whether it's a service contract or whatever type of contract to actually set in a mouth, you know, for that to happen.
Right.
Go ahead. Can I suggest, and I don't know if it, if this will meet everybody's approval, but can we actually change the wording from approval to affirm for those two, considering that some people at this table were not in place when these contracts came forward, so we're affirming a contract that's been in place that we've been working under, but we are accepting them as they are moving forward.
Yes. We'll be fine.
Any other comments, questions? Any questions, Mike? Any questions?
I think Chuck has something.
It just says that we're to be advised, I wasn't here at the time for any materials and or services when their purchase was not contemplated during the budget process, and this is one of the things that weren't contemplated during the budget process in two thousand eighteen, that's our only rule, that's our own rules there. And I just don't know how it slipped by the board where a three-point-three, three-point-four million dollar contract was signed with just one individual. I mean, it's right in our rules and regulations.
So this is related to the bond?
And the bond was not in place, but when anything's to be changed, it's to be brought to the board for the budgeting process to be amended. Okay, I mean, I'm just, I'm bringing it up, that's fine, maybe an affirm, affirmations better, but I'm just telling you what our own policies say.
Well, I think we're definitely needing to.
And there is nothing that says on services, I don't know how we can approve a twenty-eight thousand dollar purchase for material, but we can allow somebody to do three-point-three, maybe that's why it needs to go to the policies and procedures for somebody to put it all on their head to sign a three-point-three million dollar budget. What's getting us in trouble now is this ten percent overage, because we've been able to review that, maybe we could stop that without one person reviewing it. Right? That's one of the problems with the contract that we have, right?
Uh, no, actually, it's not in the contract, the ten percent overage, it's just industry standard, which is why we were putting our foot down on that. So, but I think moving forward, I haven't heard anybody that would disagree. And I think maybe to Alicia's point, if you changed it to affirmation, that would be better.
And, and I, and I would just go so far as to say that applies to the next one as well.
Sure.
Yes.
As amended.
So, so we're back to any additional comments or questions? All right, I'm going to ask Joanne to do a roll call vote, please. Jessica?
Yes.
Brian?
Affirm.
Chuck?
No.
Kiri?
Yes.
Alicia?
Yes.
Um, Tony?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Six yeses and one no. Okay, thank you. Moving on, we have the approval of the architect and engineer contract, WTA and NJB. And actually, this is an affirmation as well, and I need a motion.
So move.
Brian?
Support.
Mike?
Uh, can I, can we use the word form again or?
All right, any comments or questions on that one? All right. Be it resolved that the Swartz Creek Community Schools Board of Education affirm the architect and engineer contract for WTA and NJB as presented. Uh, Joanne, could you do a roll call?
Brian?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Chuck?
No.
Kiri? Yes. Tony?
Yes.
Um, Jessica?
Yes.
And Alicia?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, now we have the approval of the Swartz Creek twenty eighteen bond project, the BP number three, stadium seating and press box that we discussed, I need a motion.
So move.
Support.
Mike? Any comments or questions?
My only question is, we can go back for these alternates after the fact, that doesn't have to be decided today.
Correct, so you're going to be approving the base bid?
Bid.
If that was something that the board would want to consider, we would have to know by the next board meeting, so you could make that change, but you'd have to revote to affirm, because of the dollar amount, you'd have to vote to affirm or to approve, I should say, that additional expenditure. So that will be something we'll have to talk about at our next meeting.
And do we have, do we have their recommendations, I mean, they, they list them as alternates for consideration, but their recommendation is what, what would be more physically sound?
It is completely a matter of preference. So, the press box that we will be getting in the base bid package will be sufficient to run our games, run an MHSAA contest. The additional size of the press box expands the opportunity for coaches, additional media space. There's a number of additional opportunities and activities. I think based on the price tag, it's just a, you know, something for consideration at this point. They're recommending the base bid at this time, but certainly if, when we talk about it at our next meeting, if there's a, if there's a desire to do that, it could be something that you would choose to take up in a, in a motion.
And what about the, the concrete?
We have more time on that, and that will come at our next meeting when we're talking about the site out there.
Thank you. All right, where did I leave to answer questions? Any others? Joanne, could you do a roll call, please? And I'll, I'll let me read the resolution. Be resolved that the Swartz Creek Community Schools Board of Education approved bid pack at number three, Swartz Creek Community Schools twenty eighteen bond proposal, stadium seating and press box contract, award recommendations to Southern Bleacher Company Inc. for stadium seating and press box in the amount of five hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars, with a total cost of five hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars as presented. Joanne, could you do a roll call, please?
Mike?
Yes.
Alicia?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Kiri? Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
And Brian?
Yes.
Okay. We are going to have a press box and stadium seating, where people can stand, I don't think they'll want to do that, so it'd be very nice to have everything new.
They'll be able to sit not facing the sun.
That's so nice. And not feel like you're gonna fall through the pole of the press box. Okay. And now we have an opportunity for comments or questions from the board, anyone? Mike?
A middle school teacher, Mrs. Barta, passed along and asked that I pass them out to you, they're letters from some of her students to the individual trustees. One for you and one for them, one for each one of you.
That's so sweet.
Did a Mr. Claren go?
I doubt it.
I highly doubt it.
What teacher did this, I'm sorry, Mike?
Mrs. Barta, B-A-R-T-A.
This is so sweet.
Kevin Ship is so good. Would you like him to, would you like him to come down?
I heard a rumor that Kevin's birthday is thirty-ninth, I think, is Friday. I was gonna wish him a happy birthday.
Pass it along, thank you.
For the record, happy birthday, Kevin.
And thank you, Mrs. Barta.
Yes.
This is doing, this is very sweet, very, very sweet. And thanks, students, we appreciate it very much. Thanks for sharing that, Mike, that's really nice. Okay, anybody else? All right. I would accept the motion to adjourn.
So move.
Mike, Brian, any comments or questions? Those in favor say aye. We are adjourned. Thank you.